Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to our June 11th, 2024 Board of Ed Monthly Meeting. Prior to getting started, I do need to make an amendment to the agenda. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda by adding under "New Business" the possible appointment of a principal for Thompson Brook School. Do I have a second?
Second, Deb.
Second by Thage. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously, so that'll be the first item under "New Business." Then we'll just shift the numbers down after that. All right. Let me just make my notes. All right. Thank you. Now I'll start with a roll call, so that you're familiar with everyone that's sitting before you here as we get started. I am Deb Schut. I am the chair. We have Dr. Thage Singh, our vice chair.
Present, Deb.
Our secretary Jeff Fleishman.
Present, thank you.
We have Sarah Heath.
Here, thank you.
Chris Campbell.
Here, thank you.
Nicole Russo.
Present, thank you.
Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Suzanne Zakaris.
Present, thank you.
And Ramesh Kandipili.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. And as far as our administrators, we have our superintendent, Dr. Carnamola.
Thank you.
We have assistant superintendent, Mr. Janini.
Here, thank you.
Also, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Meddick.
Present, thank you.
Our business manager, Ms. Russo.
Present, thank you.
And our board clerk, as well as executive assistant to the superintendent, Ms. Sardinskis.
Present, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. Thank you. It's our final meeting of this school year, but I think it's important to always read our mission statement to remind us why we are here and doing the work that we do. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. It's also always the best segue into our recognition, and I'm so grateful that we do have students to recognize this evening, because sometimes the night before the last day of school, it can be hard to compel anyone to come on out. So thank you for taking the time. I see families are here as well. Dr. Lockhart, I'll invite you forward to recognize your student.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, please excuse my casual attire. Can you all hear me okay? We had our graduation rehearsal today on the senior walk. Usually I would dress up for you all, so please forgive me for that. So I am here to introduce Utesh Kalu, who was selected to receive the 2024 Bruce E. Douglas Scholarship for Overcoming Adversity. The award is $1,500 per year, and it is renewable for up to four years. So to receive this scholarship, he had to write an essay describing a difficult situation that he overcame to accomplish a life goal, and he also had to explain how his struggle to overcome adversity defined his personal growth. And then a third part of that essay was how he would use his higher education to help transform his community. So maybe after I'm finished, if he's willing, he can come up and talk about his essay if he's interested. So just a little bit more about him, and I asked his counselor if she wouldn't mind sharing some things that I could say here tonight. She said he is kind, personable, and a student who dedicates a keen sense of detail to all that he does. He exceeds expectations in all that is asked of him. He's well-liked and respected by both his teachers and classmates, and he easily develops a positive rapport with people of diverse backgrounds. He is a role model for others, and he has made lasting contributions in the classroom and within our school and local community. Service and working with others is a priority for Utesh, so it's not a surprise to learn that he earned the rank of Eagle Scout earlier this year. He worked with the Avon Land Trust to build a bridge and a nature trail. He's been a leader and mentor in area robotics organizations. He's on the crew team. He's a member of the class of 2024 graduating tomorrow. Last summer, he interned for UConn Health in the Department of Molecular Biology and Biophysics while also maintaining his part-time job at Panera. Some of you may have seen him. He handles many responsibilities and commitment with efficiency and enthusiasm, and so we're excited to see what he will do as an undergrad at the University of Southern California in the fall. Go Trojans! So I will tell you, I asked his counselor to write me a short two-sentence blurb, and she said she couldn't because there was so much to share about him. So congratulations, Utesh. Come on up if you're interested in talking a little bit about your essay.
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart, for the introduction, and Mrs. Bowlen, too. I know, she's not here. But basically, I say I'll just talk briefly about it. But last year, my dad got into a car accident off a new road. It was, I guess, really, it was like debilitating. It was very bad, I'll just say. It was very severe. And I had to give up a lot of responsibilities, and I had to start working, like helping with my mom with her pharmacy, and then working at Panera to gain money and just help pay some bills. And obviously, it was just, it kind of was a tough time. My dad's doing much better now, I'll say. So he's, at the point, he wasn't, he wasn't able to walk. He couldn't do anything. He was just bedridden. He was in the hospital for several weeks and bedridden for, I guess, several more. So I, and I said, I talked about like my responsibilities, helping him just around the house. I was helping, just like basically did, my mom usually comes home late, so I'll just, this is like to preface this, but my mom usually comes home late, so I had to do, pick up a lot more responsibilities, and my dad would just help because he does, he's, he works up from home. So I'd start picking up a lot of responsibilities for not only myself and my dad, but also for my brother and my mom, and start doing a lot of chores and errands around the house as well. But basically, what I said is I want to use the funds that I received from the Bruce E. Douglas Scholarship. I'm working toward becoming, I guess, maybe either a doctor or, I guess, drug, go into drug development. So I want to work toward making more affordable medicine and drugs for, so, because obviously the, you know, Medicare, or sorry, the healthcare system can be quite expensive at times, so I just want to work toward making that more affordable, so.
So Utesh, come on forward. We'll shake your hand first and give you, yes, please, come on up. Congratulations. My goodness. So we would love for you to come around the table here so we can take a group picture with you, but I also want to acknowledge that, I'm sorry that your essay was inspired by your father's accident, but you are a very impressive human, and we are incredibly proud of you, and the character that you've built through this experience existed before, it just got to come out that much more. And now you know what you're capable of, and we're excited to see where you go. So thank you for your interest in making life easier for people. Now, Mr. Storm, would you like to come forward, and let's recognize your student?
Thank you, Deb. Thank you, everybody. And so one day of school left, and we're excited about that. You get to this time for a lot of reasons. And you get to this time of the school year, and of course, you start having reflections and memories of highlights, challenges, joys, and things that will really stick with you. And so in my year working over at Thompson Brook, I have met some truly incredible students and some truly incredible young adults who exemplify what it means to be an Avon Public School student, learner, and citizen. And so I'm going to invite Mr. Benella up, if you don't mind. And Mr. Benella is a teacher of a lot of students, but Colette Titoine is one, one of his students who he and I have spoken about, who truly exemplifies what it means to be an exemplary individual. And it's really impressive at her age, I think, Colette, to have those kinds of traits, those kinds of skills, and that kind of personality that just makes her an incredible joy to be around, and everybody around her no doubt feels that same way. So, Chris.
Thank you, Noam. One of the characteristics that Noam and I share is that when given a captive audience, we tend to take advantage of it, and we speak for quite some time. And so he made me promise that I would have a prepared piece that he could preview, so that I would not spend too much time speaking about Colette. So this is my prepared piece. It is a profound pleasure to present Colette Titoine with the distinction of Avon Achiever. In my 19 years of teaching sixth grade here in Avon, this is only the second student I have nominated for this recognition. That is not to say that I haven't had countless incredible tweens come through my classroom, but it speaks to how much Colette stands out amongst her peers. She personifies the TBS character pillars of caring, acceptance, respect, empathy, and safety more than any student I've had the privilege of working with. I have told her on countless occasions that she is my hero because she always inspires me to be better. It is not hyperbolic to say that I could not have successfully navigated this school year without Colette by my side. Colette epitomizes the absolute best of everything that our district values, both academically and socially. It is an honor and a privilege to present this award to you. Thank you, Colette.
And Colette, yeah, don't sit down. We have a certificate for you, too, hon. So as you're walking up, I want to acknowledge, for me personally, and I know the board agrees, we're always so proud of our students for how high achieving they are academically, but when I hear adjectives like that shared by our staff, that means so much more, because you're going out into the world and you're sharing your light. So thank you for being you, and we are incredibly proud. So please come forward, and we'd like to take a picture. And I know there's a lot of Titoines, so please come up and you can take it. So we know we have a large audience primarily for those two students this evening, and we're not at all offended if you'd like to dismiss yourselves and enjoy the rest of your night. All right. I love that. All right. You good?
It'll be a little bit. It'll be a little bit.
All right. So now we'll move on to the regular order of business. Do I have a motion to approve our Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes from May 21, 2024?
So moved.
By Lynn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Next, do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's special meeting minutes of June 3, 2024?
So moved.
Thank you, Suzanne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll take Nicole. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously as well. Is there anyone who has signed up for communication from the public? That's okay. Yes? Oh, okay. Let me just read my instructions. We got into the habit of doing this, so for consistency's sake, if you don't mind. All right.
I have three minutes.
Just give me one second here. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and our concerns with the board. It's not an opportunity for conversation, rather, it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please, you've already added your name, so we've called you ahead. You do have three minutes to speak, and in effort to hear as many as possible, we try to adhere to that limit. After 15 minutes of this section are up, the board can decide whether to extend or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Sardinskis will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she'll alert you with a 30-second warning, and at the three-minute mark, you'll be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. If you don't mind saying your name and your address for the record.
It's in the first line.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, my address. My name is Basan Artovitch. I live at 57 High Ridge Hollow in this beautiful town of Avon. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak with all of you. I am one of the many concerned parents at Roaring Brook. I represent a large group of first-grade parents who have heard the second-grade classes are increasing to 24 students. Currently, second-grade classes have around 21 students. We all know that enrollment increases over the summer, and a class size of 24 leaves no room for growth. We are concerned about a negative impact on our children's learning. The state of Connecticut recently changed the kindergarten start age in order to decrease the large 18-month age gap that can, that can currently exist in one grade level. Unfortunately, our first graders will not benefit from this new legislation, but there are steps the district can take to remediate this challenge. The incoming second graders have birthdays ranging from July 2016 to December of 2017. An 18-month difference is a massive developmental gap at this stage in their young lives. A large class size does not position teachers to be as responsive as necessary to set students up for future success. With larger class sizes, there are more opportunities for a large range of academic and behavioral concerns. While we know we have absolutely exceptional teachers, this would put a strain on everyone in the classroom. We fully support our teachers, want to retain them, and want what is best for our children. Large classes are not in the best interest for any stakeholder in the primary grades. From what we have heard, the incoming kindergarten class has approximately 64 students registered, making class sizes of 12 to 13 students with five teachers. One potential solution would be to allocate four kindergarten teachers and add an additional second-grade teacher. This would make kindergarten class sizes of about 16 and second-grade classes of approximately 18. Please take our concerns into consideration. We hope that the district will be proactive instead of reactive. Please consider reassigning a second, a teacher to second grade in June rather than waiting until August. This allows teachers to create balanced communities for each section, and the reassigned teacher to prepare for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have her contact information if there's any follow-up that's needed by Dr. Carnamola?
We have it, too.
Okay. Do we, do we want to make sure we write that down so that we can reach out if need be?
I'll find you.
If you, it's written, the...
I'll find you.
The email.
Absolutely. I look forward to it.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I do love every one of you guys.
All right. Moving forward, we do not have a student rep report tonight, being the night before the last day of school and graduation. Financial report, Ms. Russo.
Good evening, everyone. For the month ending May 2024, we ended the month with a balance of $649,236.57, or 0.97% remaining unencumbered funds. This is significantly lower than this time last year. There's a couple of factors. Last year, we were at $2.1 million unencumbered, or 3.36%. The driver of this is special education tuition at this time last year that was unencumbered for two, two reasons. One, we had not yet encumbered our escrow payment that we put forward every year at this time in May. We did not have that information until June of last year. And secondly, our special education tuition and other expenses due to that were increased significantly this year, leading to a smaller balance or unencumbered funds in that line. We also had a rise in property services in May as well, due to some encumbrances that went in. Salaries, we continue to have some positive balances due to unpaid FMA leaves. Our deficit in our teacher sub-instruction line is due to the long-term subs for those leaves. In other expenses, we continue to see some fluctuations, our repair and maintenance lines, particularly our HVAC repairs, as we discussed, the contracted services for those lines, and routine inspections are a little higher as we no longer have our HVAC maintainer. So we have to contract out for those services. Supplies, books, and equipment, you'll see some large variances in our English and language arts lines. They're due to the board's approval of the expenditure for open choice funds last month for our K5, I apologize, for our math curriculum. Sorry about that. So our K5 instructional supplies for our math lines, we went forward to put those purchase orders through, and those funds will be offset once we receive our additional appropriation from the town. In nutrition services, we have an unpaid lunch balance as of June 3, a little over $29,000. We are going to be able to absorb those funds with an exception from the state with our positive reserve balance for nutrition services, so the general fund will not have to absorb those costs. But we do ask for all families to use my school bucks to look to see outstanding balance and to review that and get that up to date. In special education, we have some contracted services and evaluation variances due to some increased needs. They continue for audiological services, behavioral technical services, and outside evaluations that our students require. And then, as I stated, we encumbered our escrow payment that'll be made at the end of June.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Susan? Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. And maybe more for the superintendent. We have had several conversations over the months regarding the unpaid lunches. Are we putting a plan in place in the fall to be more proactive, to ensure that parents, A, who need support can get the support in terms of whether they qualify for free and reduce, or how can we prevent this problem going forward?
To be honest, I'm not sure that we can prevent it any more than we have already. We were proactive with this. There were numerous letters sent out about the change. We had, we sent out from the Nutrition Services Office. We had it sent out from building levels, too, because, as I often say, people are more likely to read things that come from schools and teachers than someone they don't know. We had social workers, school counselors, reach out to families that were on the list that, that were not in the system for free or reduced lunch. We can't do that because we don't get, we're not allowed that information, but certain individuals are. So we had them reach out to see if they needed other assistance, if they could help them with the paperwork and so on. And we followed up, in some cases, even with billing for the lunches. And we did, you know, people, people responded. Actually, the balance did go down. There are, there were a handful of people that got assistance to be able to fill out free and reduced lunch applications, or otherwise let us know that they had had trouble that we had not been aware of. Some paid the balances, and others just, we've not been able to rectify.
So is the plan then continue what we've done? And you feel that we've done what we can to ensure that our families get the supports they need? So the plan is to continue what we've done, yes?
Yes. And, you know, that's not usually why. I'm always like, well, we're going to figure something else out. We're going to do something better. I think, you know, we have a couple of ideas, but generally speaking, this, we, we put a lot of effort into it this year. Susan, I don't know what else you want to add.
We do, one thing we're, I'm working with a technology team on is the back-to-school forms have some kind of forward acknowledgement that there would be, if you were to charge your lunch, you would be owing that balance, and to have in those forms a link to the free and reduced applications. I feel like sometimes folks, maybe we don't have good email addresses, and some of the feedback was they just weren't receiving those things. We did, I'll call snail mail, snail mail letters with invoices to families, and that, that was that kind of perk of payment for some families that particularly just didn't know. So we're going to put, put that effort forward and then continue to pivot.
In links.
Yes.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I should also say that sometimes people have reported, and we know this happens, that they may not qualify by federal standards for free or reduced lunch. It doesn't mean they're not still having some sort of other economic issue at home. Those people that we've spoken to, we've also worked with.
Thank you. And I'll put a plug in when you have a graduating senior, if they have a remaining balance, you can donate it forward, and that helps to defray some of the costs as well. So if anybody's listening.
Including us.
Just put it out there, yeah. All right. Thank you very much, Susan. Now we move on to our committee and liaison reports, curriculum and professional practices. Lynn?
Yeah, we met on May 28, where we discussed course changes and technology. Everything that I'm about to list is on the agenda. We're going to talk more about it in a few minutes. The School Links resource, which is a change, Asian American Studies materials, the books that are being proposed, and the new teacher evaluation plan, which are all, as I said, on the agenda. And the books are available, I guess, for 30 days for any member of the public to review, and they are at Central Office, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Finance, that would be me. You will see in your packet, we do have the meeting minutes from our June 5 meeting, if you'd like to see what we discussed. We talked about the open choice funding grant, and I will say that Ms. Russo and I and Dr. Carnamola were able to attend the town council meeting where we sought that appropriation, and they did approve that. Now it goes to Board of Finance. We discussed the process that takes place for these approvals to happen as well, and you will see we are discussing year-end monies later on on the agenda. Now for negotiations, Suzanne.
We have a tentative agreement with the Custodial and Maintenance Association, and that is on the agenda tonight for approval. We're in the process of negotiations with the Power Educators, Nutrition Services, and Interventionist, and we will begin negotiations with the Avon Education Association in July.
Thank you, Suzanne. Policy, Thage?
There's no updates for policy, Deb. Thank you.
All right. We'll be back there in the fall.
Yes.
Liaison report, Capital Region Education Council, Chris?
Yes. Correct is all done for this year. We will meet again, I believe, in August. I don't have an actual date yet.
Thank you for doing that, and I know you got to witness Utesh get his award in person, so.
Amazing human being.
Yes, amazing human being. Agreed. All right. Next is the board chair update. I just want to again acknowledge that you guys all made it. You're here, one more day. Thank you for all of your love and attention to our students. We know that it exists. We see it constantly. We're also grateful for you and the energy that you put into it, so I just want to acknowledge that. I will share, I had the pleasure of attending the graduation rehearsal this morning with the students, and that was a lot of fun. Tomorrow night is special, so I'm glad that all of us will be in attendance. There's magic in the air when you hear pomp and circumstance kick in and everybody's walking down. It's really, it's a unique moment, and just being a board member approving all of these things that put in place the structure and the curriculum for them to achieve that goal and launch them to the next step, I think it's exciting to be a part of that. So again, I just want to wish you all a wonderful summer, and I will stop my remarks there and move it on to Dr. Carnamola.
Thank you. Mr. Medic, the hiring report?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. From the hiring report, first, we'd like to take a moment and congratulate Mr. Brian Bates, who's been a longtime custodian in our district on a wonderful career with us, and we wish him well in his retirement. Under resignations, after doing a quick audit, we did miss a few resignations between when they were received and board meetings earlier in the year, so we've included those with some of our year-end resignations of staff. In addition, we do have some new hires that we have brought on board. These folks who are coming and joining us for the upcoming school year, these are all replacement positions for positions that we have had in the district for many, many years and are not new positions in the budget. We brought in a wonderful team of educators with rich experience, and we're very excited about these folks joining our district. Some have worked for us in the past in non-certified capacities, and they've come back to us now that they've received certifications and some experience elsewhere, so we're very excited, and we'll still continue to work to fill a few more positions that we need for next school year, and we'll introduce those staff members to you like we did at the beginning of this year with photographs at New Teacher Orientation in August.
Thank you. On the enrollment report, you see that we are holding steady overall. We are still taking kindergarten registrations, as we've talked about, and I guess I'll pause here and say, even though we can't fully get in, yeah, I had it right in front of me a second ago, we're down two students from last year at the same time. In June, at the last board meeting in June, we had 3119, and we're at 3117 as we sit here today. But that, again, is as of the date this report was run. It could be five more, it could be five less. It's, this is the time of year when a lot of folks are selling homes and either moving in or moving out, so we'll recalibrate that again over the summer. Likewise, with kindergarten registration, at present, we are still watching that. What we have seen almost every year is an influx of individuals register for kindergarten over the summer, sometimes, right, as the school year is starting, sometimes the last sometimes, right, as the school year is starting, sometimes the last week of the school year, summer, or even after school starts. So at present, we're thinking about what that looks like from the kindergarten class perspective size, as was asked about tonight. But we're just holding steady for the time being because there've been too many other years, talk about being proactive, where we have gotten burned when 30 or 40 more students register, and I end up having to come back and say we don't have enough kindergarten teachers. So right now, we're just still pushing out there, and I'll say it again for the benefit of the, someone seeing this later on television. If you know someone with a kindergarten-age student and they need to register, please ask them to come and get registered. We want to be able to do the placements appropriately. We want to make sure we have the right-sized classes, and the sooner the better that people can register. And we do, people have asked you, take registrations as people are moving into town, yes. When they're able to prove that they will be here around the start of school, certain pieces they have to give us to be able to prove that when they're not actually here yet. But we will allow them even to register because we'd rather have the correct amount of students. And so, you know, I can't say much else about that with kindergarten and second grade. At present, as you know, we're going to, and this would fall under updates, really, not strategic plan update, which is where I'm headed into now, but I'll say it now anyway, since it goes along with what I'm saying. As you know, as the board and all of our folks sitting out here that work in the school district in the audience, we're also managing the second failure of the referendum. I forwarded those dates to you that Town Manager sent to me for the next round. I believe the tri-board meeting that we will attend is June 18. Susan and I will certainly be there. I know that you all cannot be there, but we'll be ready to go. And I would expect to see that, because the budget has failed twice already, that we will see adjustments made. I don't have a number for us yet. I just know that that should be what we go there expecting to happen. So we are going through, trying to figure out what different scenarios look like for us right now. I would expect maybe we'll see a multifaceted approach to the changes, like we've seen sometimes in the past when there've been budgetary issues. I have not been here for this to happen, a budget to fail twice. So when I say we've seen in the past, I don't mean we've seen like this. I think it's been many years since this has happened. But we have to stay cognizant of that and know that on Thursday night, we could be told to further reduce the budget that we have in place right now. I would expect that we would be told that. Moving forward from there, I'll, back to the strategic plan, part of the update. For the second, second year in a row, we're excited about this. We are having our leadership retreat in June. Last year was the first time that we ever pulled that off, and two days worth. The first day, we have all of the, what we would call the entire district leadership team, which includes all of our teacher leaders, which are grade-level teams, department coordinators, many of, there's a lot of folks sitting here tonight that fit one of those categories, alongside of all the building administrators and the leadership that works with all the schools, such as the four of us that are sitting here with you tonight. We were all together to go through where we've been this year, where we've landed, start thinking about next year, start thinking about the goals, look over some of the plans that we've had in place already. We'll do that all day together on Thursday. I'm happy to report on Thursday night, when we have an administrator version of the get-together, thanks to the administrators who usually put it on and invite the rest of us to come. Mr. Duffy is gonna come down and see us. So we'll be able to officially say farewell to Mr. Duffy, who, as you know, resigned due to his medical issues. But we were able to find a place that was outside that he could come and see us, and so we're excited to do that on Thursday night also. Friday, we will come back just as the building and district leadership and continue on the work that we, I shouldn't say finish, that we start really, with the teacher leaders on Thursday. We will meet, go through the rest of that on Friday, start to set some goals for the work to be done over the summer, and then, before you know it, we'll be planning to have the retreat in August, because we do it one more time before we start up the school year, to look at our strategic plans, start looking at goals and new action steps. So excited about all of that work, excited that we have so many of our teacher leaders coming also. I think, I think every one of them, last I saw, is coming. Maybe, maybe there's one or two that weren't able to make it, but it's a, it's a large group of individuals who work in the district that are agreeing to come and think about this for a second. I don't know whose crazy idea this was, but it's the day after school ends, right? So the last day of school is tomorrow and Thursday. They are all gonna get back up, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, and come have a great time with us for an entire day. So, very grateful for that. Also, wanted to take a moment and thank both the PTO and the building leadership and the teachers, who helped, you know, I've had this crazy idea for at least five years. COVID got in the way of some of it, so on and so forth. But we were finally able to pull this off this year. We had our senior walk today. We brought our graduating seniors back to Roaring Brook and Pine Grove, and it was magical. It was fantastic. So, first time we started this new tradition. I think it'll continue. I wanted to thank Mrs. Boreo, Mrs. Buckle, Ms. Horvath, Ms. Cleveland, and Dr. Lockhart, Dr. DeVivo, Mr. Lee. Everyone had to get involved for this to actually happen, on top of all of the teachers who got together at the elementary schools, clapped our students through, had the younger students make cards for the seniors. They were leaving with all this artwork and cards in their hands. I think you know how that feels when we do that for Board Appreciation Month. They were so happy. Whether they went to school in Avon for elementary school or not, if they did not go to elementary school in Avon, we just divvy them up to keep the numbers even. Even the students who didn't go to elementary school here and got a chance to walk through and connect with those younger students, and elementary schools that even looked like theirs if they came from somewhere else, were very happy. So I'm glad we were able to do that. Thank you for supporting that. And thank you to our PTO, who assisted in both the logistics and paying for that because we bussed the students over there. And so our PTOs donated that money and appreciate it very much. I'd also like to pause for a moment and thank a lot of the people that you see out here tonight. I know you're all nervous, like, how many people are going to get up and possibly yell at us about something tonight? Because there's, when you look out and there's this many people, you're like, wow, there might be a lot of public comment. Oh, my goodness. So what's wrong? I know that might be what you're thinking, but what's really out here, a lot of folks that are out here are, we invited everyone who was a part of the hiring committee for the Thompson Brook principal to attend tonight to be able to see the individual be appointed. As you know, as the board, you interviewed the individual last week, and once we knew it was definite moving forward, we invited everyone so that they could be a part of kind of celebrating and welcoming, I'll say her, because it'd be very obvious in a moment, into, into our Avon Public Schools family here. So we have some, I think we're pretty excited to do that this evening. Just thank you again to the board. It's been, it's been a long year. There's been a lot of meetings. They're not gonna let up anytime soon. We're gonna be at a lot of meetings for the budget and negotiating throughout a lot of the summer. The next referendum, I believe, will not be until July. So there could be a number of meetings between now and then. I am going to send, we have, we have, usually this time of year, we are sending out the salary agreements and the letters that assign people for the coming year. And we have not done that yet, which, we were waiting to see what happened in the last referendum before I said anything else. And I am now going to, just so you know, and you'll all see this tomorrow, but I'm going to send something out to everyone that basically says, don't get nervous. This doesn't mean something bad and that you don't have positions, because we are working at, if there were people we were able to not utilize, we would have already said, it wouldn't be in the budget already, as you all already know. So that's not the issue. But what the issue is, is a financial one from a perspective of the way our budget works as a municipality, which is, until the money is actually allocated to us, I can't move forward with sending those things out. So I need to send something that tells people not to be nervous, because I don't want staff to get nervous and to start leaving thinking they don't have jobs, on the one hand. And on the other hand, I'm unable to allow the letters to be sent out until this is rectified, because of the way the payroll system works, and the checks and balances and the auditing that goes in there. When we turn over July 1, and there isn't a set budget, we can't do anything in the system from then until there, when there is. So, you all heard me, don't be nervous, but I know people are, so I'll send something tomorrow. Graduation tomorrow night. Graduation practice was fantastic today. Thank you for everybody who helped out at the high school. Tonight, you see on the agenda, it's on the consent calendar, but I'll just mention it. Mr. Abrams is threatening us with retiring in one more year. I told him I'll believe it when I see it, but he said, one more trip at least left in him. Mr. Connolly, wherever you are, one more trip at least left in you. Also, not that Jim's retiring, I haven't gotten that notification, but at least one more European trip. This is just a preliminary approval for the support. All of the specifics have to get resolved when you figure out how many students are going. That's when the real price will get settled, and so on and so forth. But this is just the idea, at least, that we are going to move this trip forward so that they can start marketing it when the students come back in the fall. Looks like it's gonna be another great time. I think we'll have a lot of students interested. We had a great trip again this year, so we're excited about that. And just finally, I'll say thank you again to all of the faculty, the staff, and the administrators for, in some ways, just, just making it, you know, at this point of the year. That's what it, I know that's what it feels like, but you did more than make it. We did more than make it. We've made a lot of progress. We've covered a lot of ground this year. I'm really excited about the work that we've done at Thompson Brook with the self-studying, being able to move that forward. I'm excited about the math program that we're moving forward and the materials that we're gonna be able to provide to our faculty and staff to be able to teach math, something that we've talked about at, since I was the kind of principal at Thompson Brook. When, when I first started, and we didn't have someone there, we talked way back then, some of the people sitting, looking at me in the audience, were talking about needing a math program to move forward with. So it's taken us a little bit of time to come full circle with getting the English Language Arts work done, and now to move math forward in math. But we're very excited, and we've had some good professional development, I think, already on that. Yep, and the rest of it, we just made it. Here we are. Keep it on the place for half a day. Do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead. I'm done. I just wanted to thank everyone again. We had a great school year. It was busy, but great.
I have two questions, and they're not related to each other.
Okay.
The first one, I know you've touched upon this before, but now that we're definitely going into July 1 with no budget, we still have the ability to do payroll, pay our bills. We'll be able to move forward, so we're not, there's no jeopardy in that at this moment?
Yes. I, we can't commit to forward salaries. There won't, the payroll, the way the payroll lands, I'm hoping that we'll have a budget for, for, but, you know, there is some statutory requirements that the, the town has to fund us, what's called maintained budget requirement. So we can move forward knowing that. We can have the payroll for our 12-month employees, which is much smaller than our entire certified staff and non-certified staff. So we can move forward with that until we get a budget in place.
And those currently under contract that would get a raise July 1, is that pause?
Until we decide if, whether or not the board approves those non-certified contracts, we have to still decide that.
I'm talking about certified contracts.
Yes, anyone, yes.
Yes, certified union, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sorry.
It's, as Susan said, it's a difference, it's a difference between you're act, you're working now and you're working in the future. So our 10-month staff stops working, and so we're unable to commit that portion until the public funding is set. 12-month employees that have to be paid because they're still coming into work, and anything that's already been agreed to in a contract has to be paid.
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll be able to cover the bills besides payroll?
Correct, because at that point in time, generally.
For some amount of time, yeah.
We're, we're still paying last year's bills, right? So our bank account's still open for the prior year. We won't start ordering, I won't allow us to order anything until we have a budget. So there's a lot of encumbrances that are, not encumbrances, requisitions that are being put in at this time. I've allowed that to open so that the work of our 10-month employees can be done. But I've let everyone, we will not be purchased, making any purchases until we have a budget.
Okay. So then my second question, not related to that, is, I know earlier this year, there was a horrific fire in the community that displaced a sizable number of our students. My understanding that hasn't been resolved. And up to this point, we've, they've been able to continue attending school regardless of where they are staying. Knowing that that may not have been resolved come the fall, what are those plans for those students? Is there any plans? Will that have an impact on our enrollment numbers? All of a sudden, are we losing a large number of students?
So we've been working with individual families and students in the situation. The, the basic answer is, yes, they'll still be here as long as they want to be here, because technically, they're still considered homeless. Even if they have found somewhere to live temporarily, they are still, by federal and state law, considered homeless. And so they are allowed to stay in the school district, even if they don't currently reside within the boundaries of town as a result of that. And we're still providing services to students that need them. So we've had, we've had folks call my office, for example, and say, you know, I need a, I need an exception because we're living in Farmington now, but we're only here temporarily because I, there's no room at the hotel. You know, this, we've been watching this unfold, and it's not been going well for these families. So we have made sure that they are all aware that there's no issue here. We need to know where they are to be able to continue to have the correct information and to assist them, but they are all set with us in the school district.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
This sounds random, too, but you were talking about the kindergarten numbers, and I know it's something we all watch really closely, and it evolves over the summer. My question is regarding the September cutoff, and have we had quite a few families ask to, for, to be able to attend kindergarten, even though there are birthdays in September, one of the birthdays?
We have had people ask. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I know you probably do because you've spoken to most of them.
We have three families right now on the waitlist.
Just three?
Yep.
On the waitlist, not that it, not that asked.
Well, no, we told them that we would get back to them in terms of assessment dates.
Okay, so it's not like?
These are, she, we're asking two different questions, though. You're talking about in general. You're talking about registration. You're talking about, have we had people ask to come in?
Right, as they're registering for kindergarten, to say, look, my, my.
Yeah, so the initial group that requested, they're all complete. We've made that determination for those families. Since that time, we've had three additional families come forward with, with post-September 1 birthdays.
So all together with the ones you've already assessed? How many?
Off the top of my head, I think, I think there was roughly 10 families that we accepted for early entry, and then, once we get to the additional assessments for those three families. But we're, we're holding, because we don't know, again, with that, the movement of the kindergarten, you know, registration, we could have additional families. You don't wanna keep pulling staff in to assess and assess. So we're gonna do one date late in June and one date in August.
And the decision is not made based on the numbers of?
No.
No.
Okay.
Absolutely. The enrollment numbers, no, no.
Right, okay.
Nicole, I think, has some.
Kind of to piggyback off of the kindergarten question, have we looked or analyzed, and I know you can't say from one year to the next, because there's a cutoff now, three months earlier than there was, do we think or assume there will be less kindergarten students?
Possibly. It's just hard to know, because it's the first year living through it being this way. Not even, you know, and I'm sure there's still people out there that don't even know that. That don't even know that the age has changed, no matter how much it's been sent from here, if they're not already a family, for example, or they haven't seen it on the news. There's people that don't even know that the age has changed.
Go ahead, Ramash.
I think we talked about the, the next referendum is July 8, right?
Yes.
So is there any impact into the extended school year programs?
No, because that's, we must run extended school year by, again, by federal and state law, and anyone who comes back in, so even if you're a 10-month employee, the rest of the, so you don't normally work in the summer, if we employ you as part of the extended school year program, you are coming to work that program. You'll, you'll be paid to work the program, just like the custodians will, the office staff will, and so on. We, we have that money already in the budget. We plan for that in advance. Some of that is IDEA funding, not a lot of it, but there's a portion of it, small portion of it. And so we will continue to run that program exactly the way that it was already set up, and we have to.
Thank you.
Couple more things that I'm realizing I, so, so thank you to everyone who was a part of the TBS process to hire the new principal. I appreciate the time that you put forward to do that and coming here tonight. I was going to finish, go to the next school in my mind, and say, we had a wonderful promotion ceremony for the eighth grade, hers leaving the middle school. We haven't done that in many, many years. It was a tradition that went by the wayside long ago, and for years, I think, it, it's never been that way since I've been here. I don't even know what year it stopped. And we had numerous conversations since I've been here about what to do in eighth grade, and we've had various iterations of it. We've had something that looked like field day. We've had a night. We've had dances. We've had, we've had award ceremonies, and I think, I think we might have gotten it right. And I'd like to thank the PTO for, again, supporting that effort, because they came to us and said, can we make this happen? And we're like, oh, okay. Well, we've gotta plan something almost like graduation, like the week before graduation. But we, we didn't just plan it. like the week before graduation, but we, we, we didn't just plan it. I mean, we'd been planning it for months, but it was just last week, and the majority of the eighth graders came, the majority of the AMS staff was there, and it was just a really nice night. It was nice to see the smiles on the students' faces, the parents were happy, they had a dance directly afterward, and from what I'm told, I didn't, I didn't venture in there. Not because I'm afraid, I'm perfectly happy, as everyone knows, I'm perfectly happy to get in the fray of the students, but I ran out the other door and left and called to make sure everything was okay because I'd been out every other night that week. This is the honest reason why I didn't go. But I was told that our eighth graders actually had a really good time and were dancing. So like, when eighth graders are out there dancing, that's, that's, yes, that's major. So thank you, Ms. Wallace, Mr. Suma, all the AMS teachers and the PTO from AMS for as much as they did. And I mean, they, everything, decorations, invitations, helped with the logistics, we couldn't have done it without them, so very, very much appreciated. Likewise, fast forward to the high school, already said thank you about graduation and the senior walk. Project Rad will take place again this year, as always. Our high school PTO and specifically the Project Rad offshoot of that has been working hard to make that a good night for the students. I believe, Stephanie, you're here somewhere, but I believe most of them are signed up. Am I right? Yep, which is good. We usually have a very good turnout, we're excited about that also. So thank you for doing that. There's probably someone else that I forgot to thank, but that's the big picture right now.
Well, thank you. So next, we'll move on to consent calendar, and before we take a vote, I would be remiss not to acknowledge how generous the crew team was to donate a motor for the boat and the Thompson Brook PTO in donating more pieces to the school so that the kids have that much better of an experience. And again, with Mr. Abrams planning another trip to Europe, it's just fantastic to offer this opportunity, so it's thrilling to just read through what they will potentially do and grateful for being able to offer that. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Some move.
All right, Jeff, do I have a second? Second by Lynn, all in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. All right, excellent. We do not have old business. Now, our first item of new business has been shifted as of the beginning of this meeting. If the board is comfortable with it, let's get the business out of the way and then have the fun with it, if that's okay? All right, so I would love to move to a point, as the new principal of Thompson Brook School, Ms. Melissa Morgan Hotstetler, effective July 1, 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. So let's clap for that. So I know you want to speak, but I can't help myself but say things, it just happens. I was privy to know the process all along and heard wonderful things about this candidate all the way through, but then, as a board, we had the privilege of knowing, and I've been on hiring committee, so I understand how extensive it goes, the fact that you had parents that were involved and you had students that interviewed you as well, and it's always really impressive what kinds of things that they ask. But everyone came to consensus without any conflict in their mind or their heart, so they knew it was you. And when you came before us, it was that easy for us to tell as well. So we are incredibly grateful that you've chosen Avon to come to. We are thrilled at how quickly you're able to join us, and I believe you're going to be able to take part in the retreat process.
We're, we're working on it.
Okay, we're hoping.
She, she is still a principal somewhere else, and there, we're...
Well, okay.
We're working on it.
Well, we are thrilled to have you, and we are grateful that you took the time to come in person tonight so that we could celebrate you as well. So I'm always one for another round of applause, if you don't mind, and...
Is this on?
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. I, I'm thrilled and, and honored to, of course, accept the appointment. I had my fingers crossed over there. From the beginning, I was really eager to, to embark on the, on the journey, and the more I immersed myself in the process, my desire to join the Avon community just grew and grew. The, the board, the administrative team, the teachers, the parents, everyone I met with was so welcoming, and that just further reinforced my excitement about joining such a supportive and dedicated group of professionals. Additionally, even though the students who conducted my interview were a little rough on me, for sure, their candor and their high expectations just showed how much they care about their education and how much they care about their school, and I just can't wait to meet more of the kids. I look forward to working collaboratively with the staff, the students, and the families to achieve our shared goals and ensure the best possible educational experience for the students of TBS. Thank you for this incredible opportunity, I really do appreciate it. I'm so excited to continue with you, continued success in Avon. So thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Would you allow us to take a picture with you? Would you join us? Okay.
How about our TBS students that are here?
Want to come up and come in the picture with us? Ms. Salvatore, do you want to come up and come in the picture with us? That includes you, too. Dr. Carnimall, I think, includes, oh. It made me stand back next to you. I didn't even wash my hair today, so that's okay. There's always one more. I'm going to bring up the TV upstairs. You guys can have them. No, the, the board's getting out of the way. You don't want the, you don't want the board involved in any of that.
Nice.
There's more people here than there were when they hired me. I might be a little bit jealous.
That shows progress, that's our show. Good. All right. Okay, moving forward, our next item would be our Board of Ed committee dates for the next calendar year. Did everybody have an opportunity to look these over, see any glaring issues? If not, we'll take action so we can post them with the town?
We can always make changes.
And have them be special meetings.
Two meetings will be back-to-back then.
Correct, yep. We just don't have the times clarified yet. But if we are comfortable, then do I have someone to make a motion to approve the Board of Ed committee dates for the 2024, 2025 school year?
Some move.
Okay, who let that hurt? I'm going to go with, oh, whatever, I'll go with Sarah, okay. And who seconds? All right, Suzanne, there we go. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously, thank you. Now, our fiscal year-end allocation for this last past school year, 23, 24. Did I forget something?
Yep.
Okay. You good?
Well, I, I'm worried... They're right in front of me, too. I just want, I, I know who I forgot. Hello, right there. Susan Horvath, who has done a fantastic job in her role as interim principal here. I came knocking and you answered the door, and sometimes people will tell you not to do that, but you did. You stepped through the door and I appreciate it. We, you did such a great job. I was there today at the end of the day with these two and their faculty also, and I, I can see it from all of them, too, how grateful they have been with you stepping up at the helm while Noem was at TBS, and so, so appreciate you, thank you again. And likewise, Lisa, who we didn't realize would come be a star at RBS after teaching seventh and eighth graders, right? Lisa also raised her hand and came back out twice to assist us and did a fantastic job, loved it, I think, also, and, and they, and they loved you. So thank you again for, for stepping up. Can't believe it, it's always the people right in front of you that you leave out. I'm just like, there's something else very important, and all of a sudden, it came to me. Thank you, sorry about that.
Susan, she's always got that smile on her face in the crowd, so...
I couldn't let tonight go without saying it, so thank you.
It's hard not to notice, so, thank you, ladies. All right.
Do the students want to leave?
Oh, if the students would like, yeah, the staff as well, if you would like to, yes, go ahead. No offense taken.
Tomorrow morning's coming early, we know, we know. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
All right, very sweet. All right, next is our fiscal year-end allocation for 23, 24. Susan?
Good evening. As we end the, the year, we're anticipating having remaining funds of just over $275,000. As we discussed at the finance committee meeting, these are not savings. We, we had our savings that we utilized to offset the additional positions, the teaching assistants that we had this year, and some additional expenditures we talked about prior during the budget process. What these funds are, are, they're delayed purchases or deferred maintenance, and you'll see the recommendations we have address both. And given the state of the budget for next year, I hope, hope will offset any reductions we may be asked to take, to help offset what could be some pain there, particularly our supplied equipment line if we were to look at those expenses. So what we're recommending is an equipment and software to make those purchases for technology education, and instructional equipment ahead of time now that we can make, place those orders twofold. One, in case a cut happens, it's a good utilization of funds directly to take items off of next year's budget and purchase them now if we're able to. And also for Disherock Technology, to be able to have that delivered prior to the start of the school year will allow us to get that set up and put it in place for the ending of the school year, particularly since we won't have a budget until sometime in the second week of July, so those purchases will be even further delayed. In addition, there's some maintenance that we deferred, given that it wasn't critical, there was no safety concerns at that point in time, but it's maintenance that we can't ignore, including the skylight repairs needed at the high school in Thompson Brook, elevator locks at the high school that we need to install for safety, the bleacher curtains at the high school, again, for safety. And there's a dust collector system that we've been working with Mr. Dodona at the high school on all year long to ensure the, the air quality in that tech and technology education lab is adequate. Uniforms, we want to leverage the amounts we deferred buying our uniforms, we bought them last year with end-of-year funds, so we like to go ahead and order those athletic, custodial, and safety and security specialist uniforms, again, to help possibly offset budget cuts for next year, that'll free up those funds. And instructional supplies and furniture, we are going to place a paper order, try to get a lot of paper in, that's always a hot topic here, our, our paper supplies, we're going to try to get some pallets in for every of the schools. Again, that'll be some offsets of expenditures we could have in 24, 25. What we will hold off on is any of the security items that I propose that were not budgeted for next year. If our capital is approved and for our security funds, then we'll go ahead and utilize those funds for that. Or I could talk, we could talk future with the board about using perhaps the facility use funds. We're only moving forward the two projects that you had approved last time, the parking lot repairs and the playground area barriers. We'll hold off on the rest until we have a better idea of where we stand.
Any questions for Susan? Go ahead, Ramash.
I see there's a 275 grand, right, like, which is available, so, and I saw the list, lot of list here at the bottom, right? Are you saying that, okay, the 275K is good enough for everything, or is it only a prioritize list will be taken care of?
We're still receiving quotes on items, and we're, you know, what we'll do is, this isn't the anticipated amount, it, it could change, there could be some encumbrances we have, things that come in less expensive than we're anticipating or more expensive than we anticipate. So this is my best guess at this point in time, and we'll utilize and purchase items on this list until we run out of funds, basically. So it, it's a fluid process, it's more of a direction than I'm asking the board for approval on. These are the things that we were directing, and as we get to the, the finish line, which could be on June 30th, we'll, we'll utilize as much as we can.
Excellent, yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Susan, can you talk a little bit more about the alleviation for next year's budget? I think I understand what you're saying, but if we're purchasing these things now to help with next year, is that also a strategy to then, you know, for the cuts that we're talking about, or this would be happening either way, whether the budget proposed would pass or not?
Either way, one, either way, but it could have two purposes. We did the same thing last year, and what that helped us do is absorb the, all the increased costs we had this year. We had those quote-unquote savings because we were able to pre-purchase using choice funds and some savings we just had from hiring last year to help us walk into this year with a positive balance until we hit September and we foresaw what we saw and we, we put the budget freeze in place. So I'd be recommending these type of expenditures, no matter what. Some of the items that, that we're not going to do, which is the security items and something quote-unquote new, they're what we call wish list items, something that had been in place before I got here, where you lose this end-of-year funds to purchase things that you just never budgeted for. We've made a pivot to ensure that we have those contingencies in place in case things happen, as they do, particularly with special education and some other expenses, like Jeff's question regarding the Avon Wood families and what we've been doing there, that is, that has a liability for the district in terms of transportation cost. Until those families are relocated permanently into Avon, that is an increased cost we know we're going to have. So all those...
That was not in the budget, right?
Yeah, right, that's unbudgeted, correctly. There's, there's a lot of things since January that are now in place. So by doing this, one, if we have a budget cut that could affect supply and equipment, that if we decide globally that's what we're going to do, this will help offset that hit for us, and two, it'll buffer us and have some funds that we know we have walking into July 1 to offset expenditures we already know we have that we didn't budget for.
So let me give you an example of that. If you were at, and you may have heard me say something similar when we were at the last public hearing. We start this budget process in the fall, the year before, October. October, we, we start it, on, on paper, really, starting to move things forward. So fast forward, it is now June, we, the board approved this, the budget for the 24, 25 fiscal year at the end of January, '24, and now it's out to referendum. It went to the town council, board of finance, now it's out to referendum. And in the meantime, a lot of things have changed from what we originally put into that budget, and, and they're not things that you can necessarily foresee. We can always, a, a perfect example are individuals who might need to take leave for one reason or another. Someone has a medical illness, someone has, needs maternity leave that wasn't scheduled ahead of time because they didn't know they were having a baby or they hadn't been able to notify us yet. Any of those that happen throughout the year, once this budget is passed, we have to figure out how to manage. And so, for example, Mr. Meddick came into my office yesterday and said, just so you know, just so you know, to date, right now, we have seven maternity leaves that we've been notified of in the past month or so for the coming school year. past month or so for the coming school year. That's great, happy, it's good news, people are having babies and we're joyous with them for the occasion. The flip side of that is, while they're not here, we need to still staff for them. So every teacher that leaves because they're having a baby, or adopting a baby, or anything to do related with maternity leave, we're staffing for them. And we don't have a contingency, a cushion fund in the budget, because if we did, people would be asking why we had a budget line that wasn't assigned to anything and there was, you know, this quote drawer full of money. So, there isn't a drawer full of money, and instead, when these things come up after the budget is passed, we have to figure out, as I said at the public hearing, how to live within the confines of the budget we were already given. So, every year, yes, we do try to, if, when we receive grant funding at the end of the year that can only be used for certain things, like what we're talking about tonight, we try to use it on those things ahead of time so that if we do need to make transfers next year, we know, for example, we already bought what was in that line at the end of the school year, let's let that sit there. If we're able to buy more supplies with it, great. If we have to move it to pay for someone's salary, then we're gonna move it to pay for someone's salary. So, we are doing the norm, as Susan said, but yes, now we are also thinking about other things as we make these recommendations.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So now, if I could please have a motion with the best of our ability to put this forward, this is our ideal plan, but knowing that things happen and things can shift, do I have someone who would move to approve this fiscal year-end allocation for 202324?
So moved, yeah.
Moved by Thage. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Excellent. All right, thank you. Our next is special at this time of year. It's important that we acknowledge, yes, I know.
It's like we're doing instructional this year.
No, not yet, not yet, nope. Not yet, and if the board, again, will allow me to get the business out of the way first, that's all right with you. So in June, it's our opportunity to recognize our superintendent and extend her contract, and we always are thrilled to do that. So I would like to move in accordance with Section 10157 of the Connecticut General Statutes, that the board extend Dr. Carnemola's employment contract through June 30th of 2027. Moved further that the board chairperson be authorized to finalize and execute the proposed employment contract with Dr. Carnemola on behalf of the board in accordance with the contract terms discussed in executive session last night. Do I have a second? All right, I'll take Jeff. All right, let me just write this down before I bring on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very easy move. So now, this is Bridget's favorite time. We like to gush a little bit because we don't get to do it otherwise.
Turn the camera off?
No.
At minimum, can we do that?
No, no, no. We are incredibly grateful, and I say this often, and anybody that asks me how I feel about being a member of the board, I am always the first one to say, the most important and best decision that I've ever participated in was hiring Bridget. She sets the tone for the entire district. We love that tone, we love our staff, and we see the work that she does with each of you to motivate you to take chances and move into new roles and say, I'm willing to do that, because you know that she is a fantastic leader who will support you and guide you in anything that she's asked of you. And she wouldn't ask that of you if she didn't think she saw the potential in you. And that's her gift. She hires incredibly well, so we are incredibly grateful to have you join us in this family that we have. But I just always want to let you know, and I know I try to say thank you very often, but we are incredibly grateful to have you here, and we adore that you choose us every day, and we know it's not an easy job.
I have autopilot on the car.
I know. And I've talked, and you've taken the wrong exit sometimes, because, you know, so busy, but you are a.
They all been on the phone, they all know.
Yes, yes, it happens. But you have such a sense of humor about you that keeps it light, and I enjoy that as well. You have a style that goes without speaking. You just really set a standard for Avon that we are incredibly proud of, and we know our district is in good hands with you. So I will stop there, because I know others have things to say, but let's do a round of applause now, because. Thage, would you like to go next?
Sure, thanks, Deb. Bridget? Everything Deb said, for sure, and when I thought about this, you know, there's so many things about your person that are commendable, but the three things that kind of stick out to me is the way you connect with people, people in the community, families, people from, new to our community, people anywhere. Out there in the community, we've heard so many positive things of interactions with you, and I think that's huge. Like, that brings so much to the table for families, that they can actually see you, know you, the kids know you. It's really a strength I have not seen in many leaders, so I commend you for that. Your investment in our learning, in the kids' learning, in moving the district forward. I feel like we're always on top of things, we know what's coming down the pike, we're prepared, and yes, we've had curveballs, but I think it's your, you know, the way you are able to just invest that time in everything, and your honesty and integrity. I thank you for that, because even when things are hard and even when situations are difficult, you're always honest about the outcomes or, you know, where we're going with things, and that's much appreciated. So thank you.
Jeff?
So I'm gonna ditto everything that's been said so far. I will ditto everything I've said the last six years, but I do want to add a couple things. One, one of the things I truly value, we've talked about your investment and commitment, but one of the things I've always valued in leadership is longevity, that people come into a school district committed to being part of this community, being part of the district, and seeing long-term change, and I am thrilled to have you continue that. I've seen you build your team around the vision of what you wanted. I have been, and I've said it before, I have been very impressed with your style as a superintendent, as someone who's worked for a variety of superintendents. Educators have a wide variety of opinions of superintendents, but what I think is the true measure is the students. Superintendents are either known by the students or not known by the students. The students know you, they run into you on vacation, but the fact that they know who you are, and even our younger students, even if they don't fully understand what your role is, they know who you are as an educator and as a person, and that speaks volumes to your leadership style, and I think it's something that you expect from your own team, and I think that has translated to a really strong community where our students feel connected to adults and the leaders, and I'm very thankful for your leadership in that capacity.
Sarah?
I'll keep it brief. I'll just say thank you for being you, and your leadership is kind of this mix of grit and grace, and I appreciate that. And I don't understand how you can talk to as many people as you do in a day, so I give you credit for that, but that's exhausting. It needs to be, you know, noted that you're always accessible, so thank you for being that way and for the leadership. I often tell people that ask me, how is it to be on the board? And I, my immediate answer, some of the folks that are new to the board can attest to this, that you make it easy to be on the board because of the leadership. It starts at the top and trickles down, so thank you for making hard days easier and for being you.
Chris?
You knew my son's name before I sat in the seat, likely for various reasons, because he's just an amazing kid, ah, but, you know, but, but, he also knew who you were, so it speaks to you. If I text you at 7:00 AM or at night, you respond, as soon as I send the text, the bubbles start popping up. You are a talent to be able to navigate through all of these waters, I commend you. So we appreciate everything that you do.
Nicole?
I have had the opportunity to speak with you and work with you as a PTO executive board member in parent leadership meetings, and I was always very impressed with your leadership and your vision of the school district. And now, I'm grateful to have the opportunity to work with you as a board member. I have yet to meet a parent who said that they could not reach you, or who did not feel heard when they spoke with you, and I feel the exact same way as all the other board members do. You have the ability to see all sides of an issue, think about it, reflect on it, and do what you truly believe is best for the students and the district. And I am grateful for that as a parent and as a board member. You also show your leadership by being in the schools. I remember the very first day you came, my son, I think it was like, he was in second grade or third grade, it was end-of-the-year thing, and I was like, oh, the new superintendent is here. And this was the first time I had seen a superintendent in the district. And my little kindergarten was like, oh yeah, she already came in my classroom, I know who she is. And that trickles down to all the other administrators in the buildings, because as a parent, I have yet to be in a school and not see at least one administrator every time I visit. And it's not because, oh, they know the parents are coming, or it's because that is what we do. So I appreciate that kind of relationship and commitment that you and your administrators have for the schools.
Lynn?
It's hard not to go for a second, third, fourth, or fifth, because, without repeating, I thank the world of you, I think you know that, Bridget. You, just look around, all the leaders that you've developed and support, and I think I wrote this to you, and I think it makes sense, that you are able to push everyone forward without pushing anyone out the door. And that's, that's hard to do, that's really hard to do. Your communicate, yeah, your communication styles is unbelievable, because you're very down-to-earth. I thought, you said grit, yeah, grit and grace, I really see that in you, and I come from a different perspective. I've worked for many superintendents in my life, more than a few, let's just say that. And you're right up there, you really are phenomenal, and we're lucky in Avon to have you, we want to keep you for a long time.
Suzanne?
Well, I reiterate everything that everyone has said, obviously, and I can say that I moved here in 2016, and my oldest child was halfway through senior year, when we moved, freshman year, when we moved here. And 2018, summer of 2018, she was now through four principals at Avon High School, and I have a panicked child on vacation with me, and I'm like, all right, I have to call. So I called, and you the first person I spoke to. And, and it, I mean, it was panic in my household, and you just immediately calmed us all down, but most importantly, my daughter. And we believed what you said, like, how you were gonna take care of it, and you did, you did everything you said. So I've only been on the board since January, but I had no doubt that I was gonna be working with somebody who was fully capable of, you know, doing what she says she's going to do. So I just appreciate it, and it's a pleasure working with you.
Ramesh?
All right. I reiterate the same thing what everybody else said, right, but I want to do, go a little beyond. I think the first time I interacted with you was, I think, if I remember correctly, my oldest son, two years back in the graduate ceremony, right? He is a special needs child, so he's still in transmission program, but I remember the way you organized that event, along with the principal then, and the Sarah Parsons, I still remember a lot of people there. It was commendable, right? Like, that's, and now, my youngest son is graduating this year, so obviously, both my boys are graduating in your tenure, so as I was putting it in. So, that's one thing, but the second thing is, right, your leadership style is, I mean, I was amazed quite a few times, actually, so during my last six months as a board member, right? I cannot compare with other superintendents as a board member, but I can compare as a parent, right, with whom I interacted. So I think I totally echo everybody else, that you're, you're on the top of the ladder, right? So that's one thing. And the other aspect is, right, like, I always, I mean, maybe you surprise me a lot, like, in terms of the preparedness, not only for yourself, but your team, right, to come to the board meeting or any other meeting, right, it's pretty fascinating, like, that makes the board members' lives much easier to make the decisions and everything. I think that is, that is fantastic, actually. So even the amount of information even Susan brings in is like, it's quite commendable, right? Like, of course, it's all plays with, I think you lead by example, I think that's what it means to me, like, and thank you for all you're doing it, not only for yourself, but all for your team, for the parents, for the kids, for the students, and I appreciate it a lot. Thank you again.
All right, did we do it? Are you uncomfortable?
Yes. I can bring now.
Yes, okay. Thank you for your kind words, for your support, again, through another year. It's, you know, we have our, we have our successes and we have our challenges every year, and we mostly hope to turn the challenges into successes. I, you know, I'd be remiss without saying that I can only do this job effectively, because, one, as you sometimes remind me, I am your only employee, and sometimes that makes me very nervous to remember that I am the board's only employee, and everyone else works with and for me, per se. So I need your support to be able to do it. I also, I couldn't get up and drive the car, I was joking, if you didn't hear me say it before, I, I drive so many miles. I had, I had an SUV that I loved dearly but was gas-guzzling, and I finally gave in and bought, and bought a Tesla. So when I leaned over, and so I, mostly so I saved some money on the continual fuel, I leaned over and said, don't forget, I have autopilot, so sometimes even if I don't, I don't feel like I have it in me to come, I can just turn the car on and it'll bring me here anyway. Just, I'm just kidding, I'm too afraid I haven't used it, and I'm sure that everybody who knows me and technology already knows that that's true, no one can believe I bought this car, or that I haven't forgotten to charge it, or done something really awful yet, but I'm still making it Roberto. I, and it's, he's the main culprit of making fun of me with my technology. I, I am, I really am blessed. I know people say that, no, I am blessed to work with a team of people that I do here, so your support as a board, but also every one of the administrators that's sitting at the table and out in the audience, and I think they actually are all here tonight, so I can really say that. It's, it's amazing, this, it's an amazing team. We don't always agree on things, like, a parent who calls me may not necessarily agree with what it is that we have to say, that we're not, I can't, I can't always have, quote, the right answer. Someone's always unhappy about something, we all know that, but I think we all have a mutual respect for each other that's built on doing what the right thing is for the students, the staff, and the families, and that's all we need. So, these folks work hard, and they work so hard that I don't have to work as hard, which is, I'll leave it there. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I can't believe you did this to me. This is highly unfortunate, but thank you. Wow, I appreciate, I appreciate another year, I never thought, who knew I'd, you know, you never know, you never know the way things are gonna go when you start, but we've come a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you ready? We'll move on.
I'm ready. This is Jeff next.
Yes, this is Jeff, so.
Exciting follow-up.
Our new, yes, do you like that?
What you've all waited all night for. Finally, Timal, you've waited.
So we are talking about new primary instructional materials, but they are in that 30-day period, but we think it's important to just discuss them at the board level, so parents or anyone else in the community is aware of them, and they can always go visit them, but we don't need to take action tonight until the 30 days are up. So we will touch on this again in August, but if you don't mind speaking a bit to them?
Sure, so the, in your packet this evening is a proposal for seven texts, all of which will be used as primary instructional materials with the intro to Asian-American study with the Intro to Asian American Studies course. So that course was previously approved by you as a board to be written. And it should be brought in front of you in the fall for Stage One approval. And you're, you're correct. The CPP on May 28th opened the 30-day review window. So those books are available at the Board of Ed office, and then you would make a final approval in August.
Are there any questions about any of the texts? All right, thank you. All right, our next item is proposal, possible approval of a course change for technology education engineering courses, if you wouldn't mind speaking to that.
Sure. So also in your packet this evening are proposals for three course changes, all engineering courses in our technology department here at Avon High School. Matt Dedona is the teacher who's leading the work in that area. These are existing courses. The changes are all to align the work of those courses with the Connecticut State Community College system. So if you're familiar with Tunxus Community College, the state of Connecticut has brought all of the community colleges together under that Connecticut State Community College system. And so what these changes will do, much like we have ECE courses for UConn, this will allow our students here to take them and receive college credit. So for, it's another example of multiple pathways for our students. So if they're interested in engineering or manufacturing, they could take these courses and leave with college credit.
Excellent. Thank you. Lynn, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the course changes for technology education slash engineering courses.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor? Aye. Aye passes unanimously.
Can I just make a comment, too?
Sure.
The presentation was so great on those different course changes. I just really, really appreciated that. And you can tell by the, you know, well, Mr. Dedona, but how the enthusiasm is pouring over. And I just think it's great that it's not, we're not just sitting here, you know, a piece of paper. It's the, you know, the student requests and what the student experience is and what, how the curriculum looks in real life. It's just exciting. So thanks for that presentation, too. That was great.
And I'll just add, Mr. Dedona wrote a grant to receive some funding for these courses and some of the materials that go along with them. And so there's an additional course that he'll be bringing forward. He mentioned that that night at CPP. It's just taking some time to do the work of these courses. He'll be bringing that fourth course forward next year.
Likewise, Mr. Dedona wrote a grant again for the Avon Education Foundation. We did the so-called Prize Patrol. You know, I go through those grants with the AEF and sometimes have to speak on, answer questions related to them, speak on behalf of them. I'm not actually on the board at AEF because that would be a violation of the bylaws, but they invite me to the meetings as an individual connection to the schools. He, we have the CNC machine already as a result of the grant writing that was done and through the state of Connecticut. And now he has continued to add to that. In part, the last grant that he wrote for AEF is an example of that. And the AEF gave another grant for our technology department on that same day related to another teacher wrote, one of our newer teachers, Mr. Van Eyck, related to robotics. So we're happy to be able to keep pushing the technology program here at the high school along. This is another piece of that work moving forward. So thank you.
Fantastic. All right, moving on, proposal, possible approval of new technology resource.
So again, included this evening is a proposal for a software platform called School Link. If you've had a high school junior or senior, you might be familiar with the program Naviance, which school counselors use with their students to work through recommendations for college and do applications. It's a program that has stood the test of time and has not necessarily had a lot of updates through the years. School Links came out as competition for Naviance in the marketplace. And our counselors have found it to be a much more user-friendly, intuitive system. And so after speaking with their colleagues across the state, many districts which are moving in this direction, they brought this proposal forward for us to move to School Links. It's pretty much cost neutral compared to Naviance, which is always a good thing. And so we're looking to implement it with all sixth through 11th grade students in the fall. Our seniors will remain in Naviance because of all the work they've done this year as juniors. There's some nice features to it, including a portfolio option, which may help us to track some of the portion of the graduate work, and also a much nicer interface to create a very professional-looking resume for students as they leave high school.
Any questions? Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, no questions. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the new technology resource software known as School Link.
All right, do I have a second? Thank you, Ramash. All in favor? Aye passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next, our proposal, possible approval of new educator evaluation plan.
So the last thing included this evening is that proposal. The state of Connecticut came forward last year and asked that all districts throughout the state revise and rewrite their teacher evaluation model. And so one of the things you'll notice right off the bat is that it's now called an educator evaluation model. And the reason for that is with our belief is that this one model should serve the needs of all certified teachers and school leaders throughout the district. And I'm all encompassing with teachers to say service providers, special education case managers, anyone who's in a certified position. This new plan would take effect with your approval this evening in September. So that's one of the reasons why it's in front of you tonight. Included in your packet is the draft plan. We're not going to go through all of it. Just a couple of highlights, it's really a continuous improvement model. That's really the vision of this, is working together with their evaluator. Each evaluator would be primarily evaluated in two main areas. One is observations of practice. That might be their practice. We kind of refer to it as onstage or offstage. So when they're in front of students teaching or running a counseling lesson, that would be one area of observation, or the other being their offstage work. So anything they do in team meetings, in a PPT, at parent-teacher conference nights, the offstage work when their students are not in front of them. So that would be one aspect. And then the other 50% would be a professional growth plan that each educator evaluated under this plan would work under. We really worked to create some options for staff. So that's another big piece of this. You'll see a lot of flexibilities worked in based on experience, what, you know, the role that you serve for us, and really trying to allow our staff to select growth plans along a continuum from those that are very structured, really in line with something that's, you know, something we're asking them to already do as a staff, to the very creative, self-guided growth plans where they may come forward with an idea, something they're excited about, and they want to explore here in district. So that plan is there for your approval this evening.
I just want to, Deb, I just want to say, just for the public, when we had our committee meeting, we asked a zillion questions. So it kind of looks like, oh, yeah, fine, yeah. But really, we asked a zillion questions, and we were so impressed with this model, thinking that it's much, much more manageable and humane and easier for administration to use and teachers as well. So we're really excited about this for you.
And one thing I'd like to point out, on the second or third page, you'll see the vast number of educators here in the district who've been involved in this work. So all in told, I believe with the Curriculum and Professional Development Council, and then we brought in some service providers to work on their rubric, were probably over 45 individuals who've had a voice in the development of this. So we're excited to roll it out in the fall.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Lynn.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the new educator evaluation plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second by Sarah. All in favor? Aye passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. All right, our almost final item is discussion with possible action of the agreement between the Avon Board of Education and the National Association of Municipal Employees for local R1270, a division of the NAGE for July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027. If you want to give any highlights.
Yes, so, thank you. As, as you know, because we, we met through the negotiations process to talk about contractual negotiations with the custodial maintenance union, their contract ends on June 30 of this year. So this was important for us to move forward and try to ratify before July 1, if possible, so that they can have a continuation of their agreement. We met numerous times over the past few months. And we didn't have much by way of language to work on with this group. We had done that numerous times over the past few years. And so it came down to talking about what all contracts end up talking about as most important to the employees and to the district, which is wages and insurance. We have made some changes related to the insurance to move us forward. I'll let Susan speak specifically to the financials. I know you know them already, but for the record, to restate them here. As you know, we are facing a 14% overall increase for the coming year insurance. The unfortunate part of that all around is one that it costs the district and the town an extra 14% because we are self-insured. It also costs the employees an extra 14%, regardless of what it is that they pay for their insurance premium already. The premiums have risen. It's not that we are raising the premiums. They are recommended to, to be raised 14% to be able to pay the claims. And so unfortunately, as we're entering into negotiations with multiple groups, as Suzanne said earlier, we just finished the custodial maintenance agreement, and these new insurance rates had come in during that time. We are in the process of negotiating with the par educators, efficient services interventionists, as Suzanne said. This is going to play a factor there. And we will begin negotiations in July with our Avon Education Association. And again, when we're thinking about people's raises, I think it's important to note that we're talking about a raise on the, on the one hand. On the other hand, we're talking about a large insurance increase. And that is, that's impacting us when we're talking about contract negotiations. I think I should put that out publicly. That said, we are, it's necessary for us to, besides that increase in premium, make some other adjustments to insurance contributions, rates, and pieces moving forward because it's also what is recommended by the brokers. So that, we did make some of those changes. We have that agreement from the custodial maintenance group to make some of those changes moving forward. This is the first group that will see some of these changes. For one, as you know, we talked about moving from a percentage to a whole dollar amount. The dollar amount at present is still the same for the HSA contribution that the district funds on behalf of the employees. But we are moving forward with dollar amounts, not percentages. We made that happen in this contract, as recommended by the broker. We changed the contribution rate over the term of the contract, not immediately. And they were also getting a general wage increase. And I'll let Susan speak to the finances of it.
Great. So the contract has a three-year total. So it's a three-year contract, starting July 1, 2024, ending June 30, 2027. The total value of the contract is $214,664,000 increase, or a 10.91% over the life of the contract. Our insurance premiums over the life go from 19% to 20% with a 0% change in year one and a 0.5% change in years two and three. The hot, the board's contribution to the high deductible health plan or their HSA account, we changed that whole dollar amount of 1,000, 2,000, which is in percentages, 50% contribution, which is what it's at now. We just made that change to the whole dollar. And then in year two, we moved to a 47.5% contribution, or $950, $1,900. And year three to the 45%, or $900, $1,800. Again, all whole dollar amounts, just to give you a quivical to what there is to their deductible. The general wage increase for each year is 3.25% with step movement. But I will point out the step is not a step schedule that equivocate to what you will see in the par educator or what you will see in a teacher's schedule. It is start of service, six months of service, and after a year. So there's very little movement within the custodial union. And in general, the, this union is a all-long-term employees. We've had some turnover due to retirements and some medical issues that have forced folks to walk away more often than we've seen ever in the, in the last, I'd say, 18 months. But otherwise, it's a very stable unit, and we appreciate their long-term service with us. So almost everyone is at that step three. Year one, with some of our new employees, we'll see a little movement so that that year one is a little bit higher at 4.41%. The subsequent years are at the 3.25. So you don't see that additional step movement on, on those employees. And then I think that's the highlights of it. And we do realize some savings, as Dr. Cardinal pointed out, both with the contribution percentage going forward and the whole-dollar savings of starting in year two of the reduction in the HSA contribution.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions? All right, Suzanne, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, sorry, where am I?
You just start with agreement.
Yeah, oh, sorry. The agreement between the Avon Board of Education and National Association of Municipal Employees, local R1270, for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor? Aye passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Do we have comments from the public? Okay, do you want to look? All set? Thank you, Christine. All right, communication from Avon Board of Education members, anyone? Go ahead, Jeff.
Everyone gets nervous when I talk in this section. I am, I want to thank all staff for all the hard work this year. I know how hard it is. I have a full week still ahead of me. Finals don't start until tomorrow. So I'm jealous. So I want to thank everyone for their hard work for the year. I hope our staff, our teachers, administrators, everybody who takes time off this summer to rejuvenate and come back and charge for the fall. I've been debating whether or not I wanted to call this out. I am looking forward to tomorrow night. Dr. Lockhart, I thought you gave a fantastic speech last year. Having only been with the group for one year, your speech, you found a great way to incorporate them and really showed that you had a connection with them. I'm looking forward to tomorrow night, not meaning to put more pressure. But no pressure to top yourself or anything. But I'm looking forward to it. It's, it was a very fun night last year, and I'm looking forward to it again.
Go ahead, Tej.
I too wanted to say thank you to everyone and have a great summer. As a parent of now an almost second graduate from Avon High, it just is really heartwarming to know that my girl's got such a great education here. And looking forward to tomorrow as well. It's a bittersweet one. But thank you, everyone, and hopefully you get a lot of rest this summer.
Nicole.
I can speak as a parent right now. The last couple of weeks have been exhausting. I've been coming and going. And as I complain about it, I say, but they're all good things. So I want to thank everybody for giving our students these opportunities and the families to share in their successes and their joys. Between a New York City trip with fifth and sixth graders, music adolce was amazing. And I have to say, Mr. Sauerbronn planned that trip meticulously. They have, they have the T-shirts from 6:15 a.m. until 8:30 p.m. He was amazing. And I want to thank the district, the administrators, for allowing him to give the students that opportunity. Yeah, my bus buddy was out there. Also, the eighth grade celebration. While I don't really appreciate the tears that Ariosa made me cry with seasons of love, it, I know, I know. It was, it was just beautiful. So thank you. It was just beautiful, so thank you, and I hope that that's a tradition that AMS will be continuing with the PTO because every parent there just had wonderful things to say, and thank you. And Ms. Wallace, your speech, you know the kids, and the community that you have built there has been amazing, so I appreciate everything that you've done. So, then my little third grader who is having classroom fractional fairy tales, just allowing parents to come into the school's third grade choir, it's really nice to see these opportunities and to see what the kids are doing and what, under your leadership, so I really do thank you all, and I hope you all have a wonderful and well-deserved summer.
Chris.
I wish you all a happy summer. Also, I got to attend the Blazers Backyard Bash, which is an amazing event, and, oh, oh, and Sue and Ms. Cleveland, you guys were out there the whole time, as usual. Knowing everybody's names is just an amazing thing. The pirate ship got a little dicey. It did, it did. My sons told me tales like they were actual pirates. So, but it was a great day. The PTO did a phenomenal job, but I wish you all well.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Just real quick, have a fantastic summer. Tomorrow's the last day of school, but I know the work doesn't stop for you all summer long, but the pace hopefully will slow down a lot and read books and relax and be with your family and sit in the sun and just feel appreciated. I hope you feel appreciated, and I'd like to start a round of applause for all of you.
Thank you so much for making this year such a great year, and I know you are all ready to have a break and enjoy your vacation, but my daughter, who just finished junior year of high school, came back and started talking about next year, and that reflects on you. The fact that she's already excited about coming into school next year says everything, so thank you.
Go ahead, Remesh.
All right, so I want to echo the same, right? Like, thank you, everyone, each of you, like, it's a fantastic year, and I'm excited for tomorrow, actually, as a parent, as well as a board member, to be there and grace the occasion, so thank you, everyone.
I feel peer pressure. I need to say something. No, we all want to go home, I get it, but I wanted to just say, you know, we talk about the highlights, but there are hard things that happen through the year, and you all have navigated those beautifully, to the point where we're all, you know, thinking about the highlights. So, I feel like that speaks to your professionalism and leadership, too, and I hope that that message trickles down to all of the folks that work under your leadership. So, thank you for the good things, but thank you for also the hard things that you have done. Ms. Horvath, you have been amazing. I'm going to just say a personal thank you. Mrs. Cleveland, Shailin came home, "I got my yearbook signed," so that just goes to show, you know, you've made an impression as well. So, a special thank you to you, too, but really, thank you for the hard work that you've all done, and, yeah, I hope you do get at least a week, maybe, to relax in the summer and enjoy, and thank you for making this fun to be on the board, truly.
All right, who wants to motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Chris.
Second.
Who's my second? All right, Sarah. At 8:53, do I have all in favor? All right, unanimously agree. Thank you.
Last one.